Looks like we're one minute to start time. Thank you for doing the live stream. Good afternoon. This is the planning portion, the briefing portion of the Planning Commission meeting for September 17th, 2024. I'm going to go ahead and do an access check for commissioners. I know that there's a little bit of hybrid going on, and I do apologize for not being present in person today. You would rather I not be there, given how I feel at the moment. So the access check for commissioners, I see Commissioner Dick online.
Hi.
Thank you. I see Commissioner O'Neill in person and Commissioner Maza, correct?
Correct.
All right, fantastic. Well, we'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome everyone, and good afternoon. This is the briefing session for the Planning Commission. Briefing does mean that we will hear preliminary public presentation with initial questions coming from the commission. At this time, public testimony will not be taken. I cannot necessarily see in the room, I'm assuming some of this will be hybrid. There may be some people in room and some people online. Just remember to be very clear as you're presenting, so that people both online and in the room can hear very well. I'm going to read through the items that are up for briefing today, and there are three. Agenda item A is DCP-ZDR-2024-05047, 933 Penn Avenue. Agenda item B, which is DCP-ZDR-2024-01437, at 7853 Lockway East. Agenda item three, or C, which is the initial briefing of Housing Needs Assessment Zoning Amendments. Moving back up to briefing, agenda item A, reading it through thoroughly, that is item DCP-ZDR-2024-05047, at 933 Penn Avenue. This is renovations to convert existing eight-story building into a multi-unit building with ground-level retail. This is in the downtown business district, and presenting this is Mr. Fraker.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Do we have our applicant team promoted? I believe we have most of our participants via Zoom today. One second.
We're live.
Yeah. You can have a seat up here if you're interested.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Who are you expecting?
Yeah, there should be a couple. Brett Walsh. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is John Kamen, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and with me is the project architect, Chip Desmo.
Thank you. And commissioners, I'll give a brief summary of the project and then turn it over to the applicants for the presentation. So this is Project Development Plan Application GCP-ZDR-2024-05047, filed by Desmond Architects for the renovation and conversion of an existing eight-story structure in the downtown business district. The project is within the Penn Liberty Historic District. The applicant received approval for the project from the Historic Review Commission on September 4th, 2024. The Historic Commission expressed concerns with not retaining the original arch windows at the top of the front of the building facade, but were overall supportive of the project and approved the project. The applicant held a development activities meeting with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership on March 14, 2024. A copy of the D I M report is attached. The project will include 70 new units, 10 of which will be affordable, as rental housing matures at 50% of AMI. The project, I should note, is not located within the inclusionary zoning overlay district. City planning staff have asked the applicant to provide funds in lieu for the equivalent of two street trees on Penn Avenue, or the equivalent of $1,200, as sidewalk walls prohibit street trees of this location. City planning staff have also asked the applicant to provide a dumpster enclosure within the parcel and not within the French Street right-of-way. The Department of Mobility and Infrastructure have made a similar request. There were no requests to the zoning border adjustment for this case. The applicant has submitted for a lot consolidation for three parcels that will be used for this site. With that, I'll turn you over to the applicants.
All right. Thank you very much. So you folks are all familiar with the site. This is kind of a, I'll just tell you what the location is and giving you a view of rendering, showing how we plan to renovate it. Next slide. Here's the site plan overall for the block, and this just gives you some orientation as to the places where we intend to do some public amenities for the tenants and for the street. And you can go to the next slide, please. This just gives you some idea of how this building came to be. Originally, it was part of a much larger building, and these are just aspects slides from the HRC presentation, but it just tells you that there was once a large fire here in this historic structure, and part of it was demolished, and what we are left with is trying to convert an office building into an apartment building. Next slide, please. These are some other views of the building, showing on the left is the view of the rear of the building, the side that faces west towards an area where we want to do a deck on one of the consolidated lots. Middle photo shows the rear of the building with the fire escape, and the one on the right shows the corner with the front and the east elevation, where we want to open up that facade a little more for the apartment dwellers, as well as create an amenity in that existing vacant lot there. Well, it's not a vacant lot, it's a lot that's used for parking. Next slide, please. This is just showing, these slides are just showing some local, immediately adjacent context to the building. Again, these are part of our HRC submission. Next slide. Again, some more Penn Avenue context, so you can see how that first floor is delineated. That's flash block. Next slide, please. This is an existing front and rear elevation, just showing demo plans of how we intend to take off the front facade, which is an existing aluminum and glass storefront, as well as the rear, where we're taking out some existing windows and removing the fire escape. Next slide, please. This is the east elevation. Again, this shows where we're opening up some windows, the places where many windows used to exist, but we're doing this so that we can have better daylighting into the apartments throughout the building. Next slide. And the same on the west elevation as well. Thank you. This slide just shows kind of the evolution of this building. The left image is what we believe to have been what the original might have looked like. The middle image showing what it is today, and the image on the right, our intended design for the renovation restoration of the building. Next slide. This just shows some of the design intent and our materiality with regards to the facade. The majority of the facade is made up of a glazed brick that's in the upper left-hand corner, and it would be this kind of blue slate gray color. The first floor will have this fenestration to be, the intent is the left side is the entrance to the apartment building, and on the right side will be, we hope to be a food service tenant to activate the street and activate the lot next to it, where we intend to do space for outdoor seating and dining, as well as kind of like a park-like amenity in that space. This is just a detail showing more close up what that could look like with regards to tenant signage, apartment building signage as well as the main entrance. This is what the cleaned-up renovated east facade will look like. This is the facade that faces this open space amenity that we're doing on the east side, as well as it shows the entrance into what we hope to be a restaurant on that first floor. And this is what that facade will look like in that vacant lot, like current parking lot. This shows the rear and the west elevations, how we're opening up the facade, once we remove those fire escape, and just to gain more daylighting into those units. Can you go back one for a second? In the image on the right is the proposed west elevation. You can see in that elevation, you can also see it in the north elevation, the left, is a deck amenity that we want to put back there, excuse me, for the tenants, the raised deck. Thank you. And this is just some kind of early concept designs of how we would amenitize that restaurant space, and how we get into that park-like lot that we're creating next to the building. Some rendering showing planting and seeding there, some smaller trees, some paved areas where we can have walkways and lounging, as well as seating areas that are covered with umbrellas, overhead lighting, and a trunks. Again, this is just the front facade. And then here is a more detailed plan of what we're looking like, looking at for the amenity lot next to us. You can see the front part of it is really, and that's the bottom of the drawing, is really dedicated to dining and outdoor lounging around the restaurant area, whereas the rear is mostly dedicated towards the tenants' amenity. We do want to save some space in the rear for the use of the restaurant tenant, and that's why we have that kind of cordon about at the rear there. And this just goes through the logistics plan with regards to transportation routing and street closures and things like that we have in the work hours, dumpster maintenance, site maintenance. We're expecting, I think we're showing 16 months or 18 months, I can't read it from that far, but we have some mitigation measures around construction noise, traffic, parking, air and light. This is just an image from Frango Construction, showing the intent for a lift at the sidewalk and the street, so we'll need to have some closure there to allow the use of this lift for moving of debris and bringing in new construction materials, as well as a plan that shows how we intend to place crane for rooftop equipment and anything we bring up from above. This is a more detailed first-floor plan. It shows, to the bottom of the floor plan, you see that green space there, that is, that's the entrance and lobby and amenity space for the apartment tenants. And to the right there in the white blue, shows the space that will be used, that we expect to rent to a restaurant tenant, as well as how that is integrated with the outdoor space and the garden and park that happens there, both for amenities and for the restaurant. You can also see an accessible pedestrian access from the rear as well. This is the process that we've gone through to date. And that is the end of our presentation.
Thank you for the thorough presentation. Given that concludes the presentation, I'll open the floor. There is no public testimony at this time, but I'll open the floor to the commissioners. Commissioners, are there questions?
We have a question.
Like Commissioner Maza is raising his hand.
Oh, I see Frango is going to put a lift up there. So is Frango just doing the demo, or are they going to be the contractor choice?
We have made a decision.
Okay. For me, it's thoroughly disappointing if we're going to use that contractor for all the benefits that we're trying to do here in a city with a workforce hub, with workforce development. He's a contractor that doesn't use any of those things. We're trying to change our city into a model of helping people, and when I see that, it's very disappointing. Because we're not helping any of the area standards, what we're trying to build up here in the city of Pittsburgh. We're trying to, you know, build people up, generational wealth, all of those things, and we have a developer who chooses to think like, well, we don't need those things, and we're asking, we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Maza. It seemed that Commissioner O'Neill may have had her hand raised also.
I just had a few clarifying questions, and I apologize. It's because I'm looking at the screen, it's a little bit hard to read. If we could go back to the site plan, please. It's the second-to-last slide. Oh, third-to-last, sorry. Wow, whichever slide the site, yeah, I'm sorry. I just wanted to understand, looking at this, you mentioned the deck or the residence, where is that?
Well, you can see on, this is a first-floor plan, so the deck actually is that rectangle at the bottom, shown between that private alley on the right and French Street on the left. So it's a structure that basically sits above the first floor, so it's a second-floor deck.
Okay. That's, I thought so, but we'll hurry from here. And in the upper-left corner, I know you mentioned that that was space for the restaurant tenant, or hopeful restaurant tenant. Is there any construction there, or is that just kind of a space that's being held for their use?
Right now, we're holding that space for use for the restaurant tenant.
And then you mentioned the affordable housing that's being provided, which is equal to 10%. Can you describe that? I know it's not part of the inclusionary zoning overlay, but I think you mentioned that it would be 50% AMI. What are the terms for that inclusionary, sorry, affordable housing? How long?
It would be just through the voucher program.
Through the voucher program, so there's no commitment in terms of time?
Correct.
Okay. And it's, is it tied to a financial incentive or a tax incentive that would require a certain amount of time or no?
I think there's maybe a grant application that's out there for it, in that way, depending on what that is.
I can also speak to that, representing ownership. It's Brett Walsh speaking. It also is for compliance with the LURDA tax abatement, the enhanced tax abatement, and for other reasons. We wanted to have an affordability mandate for this project. It will be housing choice vouchers that will be accepted for those units at 50% AMI.
And in terms of the LURDA, is there a requirement for a certain period of time?
That runs concurrently.
There's a 10-year period, so you can, it will be at least a 10-year affordability mandate, depending on the other aspects of the financing, as Mr. Kamen had said.
Thank you. I don't think I have any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. It looks as if Commissioner Dick has her hand raised.
Yes. A question. Can you review the accessibility features for the building, on the accessible entrances, and whether or not there is an accessible, fully accessible unit in the building, and whether there is accessibility access to the deck?
Sure. If you can go back to that site plan? I think we have a site plan that actually points all of that out.
Hi, this is Jen B. If you go to the site plan that we were just looking at, where Chip pointed out the location of the mezzanine deck, there's accessibility notes on that.
Third from the last slide.
Can you tell, is it possible for a wheelchair to get onto that without?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And there are accessible units. We're providing accessible units based on the building code requirements. And the main entry is accessible, and there's also an accessible exterior path leading from the outdoor amenity space down to French Street.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd also like to add, it's Brett Walsh representing ownership, that in discussions with the housing authority and the need for ADA units that are undersupplied in the city, we are expecting to have a accessible unit count that exceeds code requirement, and we're just making a determination as to how many units that will be. So we anticipate that will be above minimum code requirement for accessible units.
That's very, very positive news to hear. Thank you.
And we're also doing that on another project that we recently completed in the city, and we've developed this relationship with the housing authority and their reasonable accommodation representatives, as it's called. And so we've laid the groundwork for how to achieve that. So I can say with confidence that we'll have, you know, we'll certainly be providing more accessible units than what would be required.
Congratulations on doing that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that. It doesn't appear as if there are any additional hands raised. Brett, I'm assuming yours has continued to be up just because you're part of the applicant team.
No, I wanted to address Mr. Maza's comment, and just, if I may, may I do that?
Sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to express that we've reached out to Partners for Work. I understand his concerns, and we are looking to provide some form of apprenticeship program through the developer for this project, and that's something that is important to us. But I respect his, you know, his opinions on his experience with that particular general contractor and programs that they may not have at the moment. But we, as developers, are seeking to have our own program, which we will enforce through contract with the general contractor.
Well, thank you for sharing that.
Just one more thing, and I'm not going to get into weeds about this whole thing, but as a resident of the city of Pittsburgh, a taxpayer, whenever I see multiple developers come into the town and use our tax dollars, our cap funding, LURDA funding, everything, and they don't actually use workers from the city of Pittsburgh, their contractors aren't from the city of Pittsburgh, it really isn't a good look, and I don't think anybody should appreciate it who lives in the city of Pittsburgh taxpayer, or a state home of Pennsylvania taxpayer, because all we're trying to do here is trying to change the business model, trying to help people, and continually, just because we have multiple units that need to be built, and we want to come in and say 10% should be affordability, how can anybody else afford it? So I respect what you're saying, Mr. Walsh, but at the end of the day, the optics of this whole thing, and multiple developers, it's not in the best position or what the city of Pittsburgh is trying to represent. Thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify again with Mr. Maza, is, are, do you consider Frango Construction not a city general contractor, not a city-based general contractor?
I'm not going to go back and forth with you. That was my response.
Yeah, I think at this, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to point, just to clarify how.
Mr. Walsh, we're going to close this presentation at this time, but thank you so much for your questions and the presentation, and I want you to have a good rest of your day.
So do I. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. So there are no additional commissioner questions or comments. We are going to move on to agenda item B under briefing, and I will read that in now. Agenda item B is as follows. VCP-ZDR-2024-01437, at 7853 Lockway E. This is a conditional use for construction of new pump station for PWSA, the Brukin Station, in the Lincoln-Lemmington-Belmar Highland Park area. Presenting that here this afternoon is Mr. Cancila.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Can we just do a quick sound check with the applicant team? I believe they're all on the Zoom right now.
Hi, this is Heather.
Thanks, Heather. Heather, are you primarily going to be the one speaking today?
I have Maura McGlocklin with PWSA, and Matt County with EVOL.
Okay. Can we just do a sound check with them to make sure they're online?
Can everyone hear me? This is Maura.
Yes, we can hear. Thank you.
Can you hear me? This is Matt.
Yep. Great. Thank you. And with that, I'll just do a brief read-in of the case. So this is a conditional use application for DCP-ZDR-2024-01437, which was filed by Brown and Campbell on behalf of Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority, who are the property owners, for the construction of a new pump station and demolition of an existing garage building to replace the existing Brukin pump station. So the existing site consists of one parcel at 7853 Lockway East. This is considered, this use is considered utility general use, which is a conditional use in the RIB IMU zoning district, and conditional uses require both review by the Planning Commission, as well as City Council, in accordance with the conditional use standards and procedures of Section 922.06, and the use standards for the utility general use. Okay. So with that, the standards for those include facilities shall be physically and technically located within an enclosed building in all districts except the RIB. So B is not applicable here, since we're located in the RIB. The improvement body shall require additional landscaping if deemed sufficient, and the improvement body shall determine that the use shall not create detrimental effects on the surrounding properties. So this site is located in a floodplain overlay, in an identified FEMA floodplain. However, the proposed scope of the work is located outside of the boundaries. The applicant has submitted for a floodplain permit for the proposed development. This proposed, the design of the pump house required an administrative exception for the design standards in the RIB for non-residential uses. The posting period expired today, actually. This property is located both in the Lincoln-Lemmington-Belmar neighborhood, as well as the Highland Park neighborhood, which, so there's a registered which, so there's a registered community organization in each of those neighborhoods. There is a joint development activities meeting held on May 29, 2024. And those meeting notes are provided in the briefing reports to commissioners. There's no public art and civic design review required, given that this is going before planning commission. Staff design review for the development was held on July 29, 2024, at which point the DCP staff determined that, given the isolated site, which the applicant team can discuss, but given the isolated site, there's no real impact on the public realm. So Cnap was determined not to be required for this. There's an improved stormwater management plan for this project. And there was a parking demand analysis that was required. And the applicant provided that analysis showing that this facility is not generally occupied and only occupied during periodic inspections needed for any type of maintenance activity. And the applicant is providing seven parking spaces as well as one bicycle parking space to meet this parking demand. This application is also currently under review by the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. And again, there's, it's just subject to the review criteria for a conditional use application. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to the applicant team to go ahead with their presentation.
Hi, oh, I I can share my screen, but is that okay if I just share my screen or will that mess things up?
I I think we'll we'll have it just shared from from our screen if that works.
Okay, Maura, if you'd like to go ahead and get started.
Sure. Thanks, Heather. Thanks, Paul, and thank you to the commissioners for the time today. Yes, this is our Bruken Pump Station Improvements Project. I'm just going to go through brief welcome and introductions for the people we have on the call. Give a little background context of the water reliability plan. This project is part of that plan. And then the project team is going to review location map and descriptions of the project, design plans for the pump stations, review the project schedule, and then leave it open to any questions you may have. So briefly, my name is Maura McLaughlin. I'm part of the PWSA Public Affairs Group. I am a construction communications PM. We also have on the call Anthony Galena, who is the project manager within PWSA. We have Sonya Sfilah, also an associate project manager on this with PWSA. We have Heather Dotson from Brown and Caldwell, Matt Conti from Evolve, Christine Mandor from Evolve, and Andy Mitchell from Brown and Caldwell. So again, some brief context around this project. This is part of PWSA's Water Reliability Plan, which is a once-in-a-generation series of projects that will update pumping, distribution, and storage systems in our water distribution system. All these projects will ultimately strengthen our system, add redundancy to water services in Pittsburgh. And it all culminates with the completion of the Clearwell Project, which you see kind of towards the middle of the page on the north side of the Allegheny River there. Much of this work is required by the state through a consent order, and this will be an investment of over $300 million in the next five years or so. So that'll turn it over to the project team.
Sure, and then this is just an old photo of when the Bruken Pump Station was constructed back in the 1930s. We just wanted to put some nice context to that. Paul did a great job going through the overview. This site is located at the intersection of Allegheny River Boulevard and Washington Boulevard and accesses through the state or from the city streets Lockway East. It is, the site itself is a brilliant yard, and it's fully located within the Lincoln-Leamington-Belmar community. But we do have a temporary access through the Department of Public Works site directly to the west of it. And that is Highland Park Community. The Highland Park Community. Again, this is the RIV industrial mixed use, which means we're under zoning code 905.04. We're not changing the use of this site. It is a pump station now, and it will be a pump station after the construction. The existing pump station was reviewed and was determined that it would just be more cost-effective and time-effective to build a new pump station. This is a water-dependent use site, and, oh, you're fine. And as as was stated, we've already done our dam meeting in May, and we had previous meetings with the community in 2022 and 2023. This is just an overview of the site. As you can see, we are fully within Lincoln-Leamington-Belmar. To the east of us is the Diamond Beach Property. It's a boat club. And then to the west of us is the DPW materials site. Access is again from Washington Boulevard and Allegheny River Boulevard. We really wanted to put this constraints and contractor laydown area up front just because this property is kind of smushed between the Allegheny Valley Railroad and the Allegheny River. There is not a lot of space, and this will remain an active site during construction. The existing Bruken Pump Station will have operation and maintenance staff coming in and out throughout the day. The reason that we decided to work with the DPW for the temporary construction road is to make sure that the staff that were going to beat Bruken Pump Station and the admin building as well as people going to the Diamond Beach Property had access that was away from the construction activities. The temporary construction road will be gated and completely fenced and separated from the DPW site activities. DPW staff and trucks will be able to access their sites without having to go through additional fencing. Our our contractors will go through the construction road underneath the Allegheny Valley, the abandoned trestle, and then we'll have another security booth and access on the other side on the PWSA property. We believe that the 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 site, the contractors will need to find property off-site for massive material storage as well as for their their trailers and vehicle parking. There's just not space for it. This is just a nice visual rendering of the proposed pump station. To the right is the existing Bruken Pump Station, and to the left is the existing admin building. And you're facing up towards the Highland Reservoirs. And I just like that Matt put in a very old-timey train in the background. So on the next slide, we have the aerial. There are, it should be noted, there are no trees on this property. The green that you're seeing by the Allegheny River, that is on the US Army Corps Right-of-Way, and that's all brush and shrubs and and whatnot. The existing material storage will be relocated during the construction and permanently relocated to the east of the existing Bruken Pump Station. The Department of Public Works, you can see that the contractors will be coming into the south, kind of close to the Allegheny Valley Railroad. And you you can also see the Lockway East entrance for the ops staff and the Diamond Beach, the people heading towards Diamond Beach. The admin building will also remain, and the existing garage will be demoed. We want to add some site context. This is the existing Bruken Pump Station from the river. To the left is the garage, and to the left of that is the admin building. The sign, the neon yellow sign is on the Army Corps Right-of-Way just warning voters of the upcoming Highland Dam and locks. So the next few slides are just some photos of the site for context. It is fully paved. This is the garage. This is looking, the top two are looking towards the city, and the bottom is looking towards the Diamond Beach property. I wanted to show how big the proposed pump station is compared to the existing garage, just to give you a feel for the footprint. It is tied to a suction vault to the river that is up by Texas Road along the the edge of the property. That is tying in an 84-inch line that goes, currently runs to the existing Bruken Pump Station. It's finished drinking water from the Aston Wall Treatment Plant. Additional work will be the underground storage detention basin. That is, we're kind of legging into this site to the east. There is a second stormwater detention basin taking those flows that are directed towards the west, to the west of the Bruken Pump Station. Duquesne Light also will be pulling in, that's okay, you can keep going. Duquesne Light will be pulling in a new substation that will be replacing their existing substation concurrent to this construction. So the pump station, the proposed pump station will house pumping equipment, discharge piping, tying into chemical, the chemical feed system, electrical equipment. And we'll have a new biking, we'll have bike for anyone brave enough to bike down Washington Boulevard. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt, and he can discuss the architectural aspects of the building.
The architecture for the for the new pump station is trying to tie in the the original Bruken Pump Station, the stone, and we're using similar stone on the base of the new pump station. And then, since the building won't be really viewed from up close, it's it's scaled up a little bit. So it's viewed from further away with larger fenestration. In this case, these will be polycarbonate window sections for natural daylighting to the pump station. And so those are the what you see here on the rendering. And then the upper facade will be a combination of various varying corrugation densities of metal panel that will give the, will break down the overall mass of the pump station building. So if you keep clicking through here, this is the view from the west. And then you have two elevations in the next two slides that zoom in on those materials on the building itself. That's everything for this.
Matt, if you want to talk real briefly, this is an unoccupied facility, but we are expected to put a cool roof on this and do some daylighting with the building too, correct?
Yes, 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 we have a white roof, and those polycarbonate panels will be providing the daylighting to the pump station.
Regarding to the stormwater basins, I just put up a photo of what those R tanks look like. They are, you can make them any dimensions that you need, which is what we needed for this site. It's very heavily. There's a lot of utilities underground, so we had to work around that and around some of the upgrade and infrastructure. They, all of the inlets do have water quality inserts. And so the R tanks will get both water quality and water detention, stormwater detention, and outlet to an existing outfall that is regulated by the PIP. We are adding a bike rack, as I said before, and it's away from the traffic. We're going to put it to the the existing Bruken Pump Station, so which will not have as much traffic. So trying to keep the biker protected. The next slide, in terms of construction impacts, all construction is within this site. The trucks will be entering via Washington Boulevard and Butler Street, less so from Allegheny River Boulevard, I believe. All work will, as I said, all work will occur within the facility, and project schedule is Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. So there will be some additional traffic. We don't expect any road closures or any lane closures for this, for this project in any way. But PWSA will work with them for any, any one and done situations where we may need flaggers. And to the schedule, we are pulling together our bid documents. We do have received our public water supply permit in March 2024. We've gone through the ship out process, and it is not a site that was deemed historically relevant. We do not need to have any preservation activities. We do have an individual Chapter 102 permit through the DEP as well. In terms of the contract award schedule, we're looking at the first quarter of 2025, with construction starting around mid 2025, probably closer to fall. I'd say probably closer to Q3 than Q2, and an anticipated completion of late 2029 and early 20, or 2030. There's been a lot of community outreach. PWSA does a great job with that. We've had three meetings with the RCO communities with the Lincoln-Leamington-Belmar and the Highland Park Community, as well as PWSA did a contractor outreach in, I think, March of this year, 2024. And with that, we are opening up to comments. And, well, this is old. It should be Anthony Galena. Maura, you can send your questions to Maura. She's going to send it right over to Anthony Galena of PWSA. He is the PWSA project manager for this project. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. We appreciate that. At this time, there are no questions from the public. Commissioners, are there questions or comments as it relates to this presentation? It looks as if Vice Chair O'Neill has her hand raised.
Just as a preliminary question, this is for staff for Paul. There is an administrative's exception pending. Or are we approved for this?
So yes, it's kind of approved, and then there's the 21-day dosing period, which just expired.
Okay, and just so we're not overlapping when it's part of our discussion, what was approved under that administrative's exception?
The alternative design compliance, because basically there are certain design standards that are applicable to the RIV zoning district that this this particular, there is an administrative's exception that allows current compliance so long as the project essentially is deemed to be in compliance with the purpose of the zone and given the kind of purpose of the industrial mixed-use zoning, RIV zoning district, it was determined that that it was compliant.
That's really helpful. Thank you. And then for the applicant, I just had a few questions about some of the scope and some of the views. If we could go, I know you referenced the western elevation. I think it is the view from the bridge. Right, thank you. And at the beginning of the presentation, you mentioned that the existing riverbank area is scrubbed. If there aren't any trees there, are these trees proposed as part of this project? Is this representative of what will be there?
No, this is outside of our our limited disturbance and outside of the PWSA property. I believe this is the Army Corps Right-of-Way. And it's not in our scope to touch the the this. So at this point, PWSA, I believe, and Maura, you can talk more to this. I believe you just clean it on a on a yearly basis. And I think Sonya is also on this. She might have a good idea too of what's being done on that hillside, this riverbank.
Yes, and I think just when you're coming back, if this image or any images could be more representative of what it will look like from the riverbank or from the river. be more representative of what it will look like from the riverbank or from the river, you know, moving any, bringing trees would be appreciated. I also think, you know, as we're looking at our riverfronts a little more closely, it would be helpful to have a view from the river so that we can understand how this project, you know, impacts that, that experience and that view. I understand that this is kind of a remote area and this is a utility, but it would just be helpful to understand the context.
Sure.
I think that is my only question. So thank you for the presentation. It was very thorough.
Additional questions or comments from commission? All right. Hearing and seeing none. Thank you again for a very thorough presentation. Have a great rest of your day and we'll see you back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are moving on to the third and final agenda item in our briefing for today, and that is Agenda Item C. And this is the initial briefing of Housing Needs Assessment Zoning Amendments. This is the zoning text code amendments to inclusionary zoning and minimum lot size or minimum lot size per unit. This is citywide and presenting today is Mr. Lehman.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Also, I think we have Andrew Dash, who can make sure he's.
Hi, everybody.
Andrew. And start. There we are. So these are, we're going to brief you on code changes, just a couple for today. We're going to take, take them in lights.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, so, you know, I mean, we'll, we'll talk about, you know, the city has, is, is looking to move forward a, you know, series of code amendments relative to housing. These all come from work that the city, you know, convened through 2020, 2021, which led to the update to the city's housing, housing needs assessment, which was released in 2022. If we want to go to the next slide. There, you know, the, the amendments, you know, that we'll be talking about, you know, over not only this briefing, but, you know, but others, you know, are around the five things that are on the screen here, transit oriented development and making zoning amendments and map amendments around, you know, fixed guideway transit stations. Implementation and of accessory dwelling units citywide, reform to the, you know, to our parking ordinances, inclusionary zoning and, and changes to our minimum lot size requirements. So those last two will be the ones that Mr. Lehman will be speaking to. You know, again, you know, we'll be reviewing some of those at today's briefing. We do want to break this up and, you know, be, to be able to have conversations with the commission on these in chunks, so that we're not trying to address all of this with you at one time. Some of this has different timelines, you know, for community engagement, you know, or, or other outreach that we have to do. So we want to be able to outline that to you all through these briefings and then, you know, be able to take commission feedback at the same time while we're taking public feedback to then be able to advance these amendments through the, the adoption process. So if we go to the next slide, it will, you know, kind of, the Housing Needs Assessment broke down and did an assessment of needs, you know, across three different categories. You know, the first being people, you know, and really what it was saying was that, you know, that we are, you know, we, we have our, our affordable housing gap, which was, you know, which was outlined in the 2016 Housing Needs Assessment, had actually shrunk. But it didn't shrunk, it, it didn't shrink for good reasons. It shrunk because although our incomes were rising, and we will get that into that a little bit, you know, that, you know, that incomes were rising faster than rent, at the same time, people who are existing here in Pittsburgh were not able to afford Pittsburgh and stay in Pittsburgh as those rents increased. And so, you know, especially low income renters, you know, beyond that, low income black renters and black families were, you know, most vulnerable and were, you know, were being lost from the city into surrounding suburbs outside of Pittsburgh altogether. You know, and really in that, you know, these people that are, you know, kind of most vulnerable are losing their social networks, they're losing their networks, either losing their ability to transit and other, and other things, you know, to be able to find cheaper housing in outlying municipalities. We looked at housing and so, you know, there is, you know, a lot of housing, you know, I mean, there was housing being produced in the last five years, you know, and, and seeing that we were, even though the city's population has declined or even decreased slightly, we have had an increase in the number of households in the city of Pittsburgh, which have resulted in smaller families, smaller households. And so, you know, the market in response to that, you know, has seen a lot of multifamily construction, you know, within, within the city, within the city proper, where a lot of the single family activity is not new construction, but, you know, is, you know, kind of flipping activities of existing homes. And we do see that trend continuing moving forward, that, you know, there will be a need, just with the city and the housing stock that we have today versus, you know, what we see projecting out as far as family and household sizes, there, there will be a continued need for, you know, more multifamily in the city. The third, the third area of needs were neighborhood needs. You know, again, you know, I think commission is probably pretty aware of this through the testimony that you receive and, and the projects come through. You know, there is, you know, kind of pressure around home prices in the city of Pittsburgh and the increases there, you know, continued concerns or actual displacement of residents here in the city. At the same time, you know, you know, some of our older housing stock, you know, is, you know, is, is, has a lot of repair needs or have a lot of repair needs. And so, you know, that, you know, residents are not only being displaced by increasing costs in housing, but also being displaced because of poor condition of housing in some of our most vulnerable neighborhoods. And so, you know, so to try to address that, which was different than our 2016 Housing Needs Assessment, we did get into a series of recommendations. You know, although, you know, you'll see a lot of the recommendations around advocacy and tenants' rights taking shape outside of the scope of the commission or even outside of the scope of the Department of City Planning, you know, there are a lot of recommendations that are, that are in the process of being implemented, you know. And so we see a lot of the mediation and, you know, and access to legal services that folks like Rent Help P G H or that the Redevelopment Authority are doing. We, when we look at things, you know, like subsidy, increased changes in subsidy to that, things like the Housing Opportunity Fund, you know, these are implementation of some of those subsidy and tenants' rights recommendations that, you know, are going on in the Housing Needs Assessment, you know, that would be things, probably, you know, most likely outside of the commission's purview. But there are a lot of recommendations, you know, which we will be talking to you about, which really focus on, you know, these land use recommendations, these land use policies. So, you know, so the, this package of amendments is really meant to be, you know, the first phase, a pretty large phase of, you know, of being able to try to address those needs. And so now that, if we go to the next slide, that starts to get us into the specifics. And so, you know, to get into the specifics and the details of both changes to the inclusionary zoning policy and the, and the amendments that we're proposing, as well as changes around minimum lot size and minimum lot size per unit, I will turn it back over to zoning administrator Lehman to go through the details.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director Dash. This is, as you see on the screen, we're talking about inclusionary zoning as one of the policies today. I'm going to use I Z for short. That's one of the primary recommendations in the Housing Needs Assessment, is for the city to adopt the inclusionary zoning citywide. This I Z makes sure that neighborhoods can offer new housing units at a variety of price points by requiring a percentage of units as part of larger market rate developments to provide housing units that are affordable to lower moderate income residents. The city currently has an inclusionary zoning or I Z overlay, and that's in Polishell, Lawrenceville, Bluefield and Oakland. So this proposal is both to expand the I Z policy and also to update it, to correct some of the challenges that we've had with it with the current iteration and to also build in more flexibility and more carrots. So some of the features of the, of the proposed change are to, like I said, expand it citywide, making sure that rental units are permanently affordable. This allows buyers for for sale units. One of the changes we're making is to allow buyers for for sale units to earn equity upon selling, selling while requiring that those units are affordable for the next buyer. We also allow flexibility around bedrooms and units to encourage larger family sized units. For example, a building that has all one or two bedroom market rate units may be able to reduce the number of the required floor unit by providing three or four bedroom units. And also we changed the area where offset units can be provided from a quarter mile to a half mile. So like I said, we did build in some more carrots or bonuses to help offset the added cost that it takes a developer to include inclusionary units. And there are some that we're listing here and there are others that are still in discussion that are less in code and more operational. Currently in this proposal, we have, you know, some of the, already in the zoning code, some of the city's zoning districts, particularly the Riv, Oakland and Uptown, use a performance point system that automatically builds in two performance points, which generally equals around 30 feet of additional building height built in when they include a similar level of affordability and affordable units into their project. So what we're proposing to do is to expand that same bonus to zoning districts that aren't, that don't have the performance points option. So this is expanding that bonus citywide in a similar amount of bonus height or density. For areas that have step back requirements, those would be exempted for I Z projects. That's something heard recently from developers who are working in those districts with performance points, particularly around residential development, that the building setbacks can be an added cost on those margins. And then finally, we're exempting the residential compatibility standard height requirements from I Z projects. All right, next slide. So two examples of where, and those are just two, of where the inclusionary zoning changes in sentence would have had a significant impact. First, the Bluefield SureSave Development, which was proposed and wasn't able to proceed after not, not receiving its variance requests. This new incentive would have avoided the need for residential compatibility standard height variances and would have allowed 75 feet and 4 to 1 F A R. And that would have allowed the development to avoid variances for height or F A R. And then the Shakespeare Street Giant Eagle, which is, or Market District, which is proceeding, these new incentives would have allowed them to avoid variance and special exceptions related to height, and it would have allowed that development to proceed faster and without the uncertainty that comes with, you know, applying for a variance or a special exception. So the other item we want to brief you on today is minimum lot size reforms. This piece came from collaboration with Councilmember Warwick and her staff, and it picks up a recommendation from the Housing Needs Assessment that we've been working to address more comprehensively and a full overhaul of the base residential zoning districts. What was identified by their office was that a modest change could happen in the meantime. And while the overhaul is being, being worked on, these changes can still have a significant impact. And we agreed with, we agreed with that assessment and we're excited to work with their office on this. So what's being proposed are minimum, well, for a little bit of context, minimum lot size requirements, a minimum lot size per unit requirements are a type of density control in the zoning code that historically are associated with exclusionary zoning, meant to keep lower income households from living in wealthier neighborhoods. So these have a pretty nasty legacy. A lot of cities have identified this history and have been working on alternative forms of residential zoning to avoid these types of mechanisms. The larger lot sizes, larger minimum lot sizes overall can drive up the cost of housing by requiring more land to build the same number of homes. And then minimum lot size per unit requirements can artificially cap the number of units that can be built in an area that otherwise permits multiple units. Next slide. So here's an excerpt from the Housing Needs Assessment that shows how these requirements can be a hindrance to multifamily development. The study showed that in, and I know this is hard to see, so you'll have to take my word for it if you can't read it from where you are. In R M V H districts, that's residential multi-unit, very high districts, 81% of the properties were too small to allow four units. So that says the code allows four units enough, but almost all of the properties are too small to allow it to happen. In R M H districts, 72% were too small to allow four units. And in R M M, 89% of the properties were too small to allow four units. And that's under our current zoning. Next slide, please. And then similarly, this excerpt shows the impact of minimum lot sizes on single family residential districts. In moderate, high and very high density residential districts or single family districts, more than 60% of the parcels are too small to comply with the minimum lot sizes of more than half. And then in very high density districts, 80% of the lots in those districts are, are too small to comply as they're already planted. Next slide. So this proposal will remove minimum lot size per unit requirements completely from the moderate, high and very high density single, or districts across all single family two unit, three unit and multi unit. It's going to reduce minimum lot size requirements for the same districts to better align with existing lot sizes. In other words, make it more contextual. And then these changes will allow for building technologies in R2 through R N, so residential two unit, three unit and multi unit districts, like duplexes and quads, to be built where the lot size per unit restrictions have made them prohibited. Other zoning requirements in residential districts remain in place, including setbacks and height restrictions. Obviously, this is not a massive change to the way those districts work. Next slide. These charts show the specific changes from the current to propose. So that's for moderate going from 3,200 square feet minimum lot to 2,400. And high, 1,800 to 1,200, and from very high, 1,200 to zero. And then in, and then of course, all of the minimum lot size per units are being eliminated in those districts. There aren't any changes to low and very low density districts. And then slide 17, again, this one's a little bit hard. Oops, go ahead to the map. This one's a little bit hard to read, but it's a graphic illustration of how elimination of minimum lot sizes per unit, lot size per unit requirements could impact. Oh, I think I skipped my notes here, sorry. This map shows Pittsburgh's residential districts and where these changes would be effective, with the lightest color being single unit residential and the darkest being multi unit. So it just gives you a sense of how prohibitive those have been under our current zoning. All right, finally, last, next to last slide. This illustration shows how elimination of This illustration shows how elimination of minimum lot size per unit requirements could impact a 3,200-square-foot residential multi-unit, moderate-density parcel. Under the current code, the 1,800-square-foot-per-unit lot size restriction limits the number of dwellings from four or more down to two. If the lot happened to be less than 3,200, and it shows that if you, sorry, it shows on the right-hand side that if we eliminate, as we're proposing, the lot size per unit, then you could easily develop four 900-square-feet units within that same building within, you know, a typical residential scale, relatively low-scale, setbacks and height. And then to let you know, too, you know, as we know, most of the parcels are less than the minimum lot size, so could stay on that for one second. The, a 3,200-square-foot lot, it's very likely that there might actually be a lot that's less than 3,200 square feet, and in that case, the property would require variance for the lot size to be developed at all, and then only one dwelling would be permitted without additional variance. So again, just illustrating how prohibitive the current zoning is to allowing the density that the code, or the number of units within the district already allow. All right, finally, slide 18.
Yeah, I can, I can kind of speak to this. You know, so, I mean, you know, we, we did make a public announcement, you know, around this, you know, on the 5th of this month with Mayor Ganey. At the same time, we had been meeting with organizations in advance of that. And so, meeting with housing advocates, meeting with community organizations, we were trying to be able to get some preliminary feedback, you know, on the proposal with, you know, with developers, with, you know, with other housing organizations, you know, in advance. You know, and so, you know, that, that all happened through, you know, even earlier than July and August, but, you know, but in more earnest in July and August. You know, we had also been meeting with council members and elected officials during that period of time. You know, with the launch, with the press conference that the mayor held with the department and with Director Bay, you know, on these amendments, we did launch an EngagePGH page. So the details and proposals for all of these amendments, not only the two that we presented today, but the other three that we will present to you, you know, at a future briefing, you know, are all there. And there are drafts of code, you know, for all of those amendments, which we are taking public feedback on presently. We are also community, are continuing community outreach, both with, you know, neighborhood organizations, with advocates, with other groups that we may have spoken to before or may not have spoken to before, and are continuing to add to that, you know, to that list. So as we get towards bringing these amendments to hearing in action with the Planning Commission, we will have a full list, obviously, prepared for you of all of those community organizations or resident organizations, or, you know, issue-based organizations that we've met with. You know, we will have another briefing in two weeks, which will talk about the other pieces of this package of amendments, which, like I said, include, you know, work that we're doing to rezone areas around transit-oriented development, and work that we're trying to do, you know, increasing opportunities for transit-oriented development, work that we are trying to do to allow for accessory dwelling units as an additional option for residents to be more flexible with, with housing types and housing opportunity, you know, and looking at reform to a lot of our parking ordinances, which, you know, as, you know, folks are aware, you know, are a piece that definitely add, our minimum parking requirements are something that add to housing costs citywide. So we look forward to being able to brief those amendments to the Commission in a couple of weeks. You know, looking to, you know, late October, you know, as, you know, kind of an anticipated date to be able to bring these amendments back to the Commission, you know, for, you know, for kind of a full briefing. And, you know, then looking to bring these back for hearing in action afterwards. We have development activities meetings scheduled for, the, you know, all of these changes are, sorry, to clarify, all of these changes are text amendments, except for, you know, the work around transit-oriented development, which we'll talk about in two weeks, and that, those are map amendments. Those will have to have development activities meetings, which we have presently scheduled for the month of October, you know, to, or the last day in September, to then be able to bring these to hearing in action to the Commission, like, like it shows on the screen in November or December. So want to thank you, we know this is a lot, you know, and want to be able to, obviously, get Commissioner feedback at multiple points in this process. So, you know, really want to hear what questions or comments that you have, so that we can really work to incorporate those into final drafts that we'll bring to the Commission before hearing in action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dash and Mr. Lehman. Very thorough presentation. I think, at least for myself, and I think for fellow Commissioners, these bite-sized pieces, I, I think are very digestible for the Commission, but also for the general public. So huge appreciation for that in, in those bite-sized deliveries. I think it's critical for the ability to be able to understand it as well. Now, there is no public testimony at this time, but we're going to open the floor. Commissioners, I'm sure there are probably some questions. Commissioner Mazat, looks like you have your hand up.
I just have one question, and I know there's a lot of info there to digest. So, so the lot size right now that you're allowed to develop is 3,200 square feet, right?
That, that's in just that one particular district.
And then you've taken it down to 2,300 square feet, or whatever that is.
Right.
So if you have houses on both sides of that, and you couldn't develop it before, now you're saying you could put a two-unit or a quad in between there.
Yeah, I mean, it would be. Yeah, it would be, you know, based on the specifics of that district. But, yeah, I mean, what you have in a lot of the city is, you know, just as you're describing, that you have neighborhoods that were platted long before the zoning code.
Yeah.
The lot sizes are under, you know, sometimes 80 and up percent of the lots are under what the minimum lot size already is. And so you have these lots that, in order to develop them, you would have to get variances under the current zoning. So what this does is eliminate the variances, and also for those where it's an R2 or an RM that allows for multiple units, those lot size per unit requirements were also prohibitive. So even you can have a whole neighborhood that's zoned R2, but not one of the lots in that neighborhood would allow two units to be built, right?
So you believe this will help start to spur more development with a lot of vacant lots that we have in the city?
Yeah, we feel like this is low-hanging fruit in terms of what's already, what's already out here in our existing fabric.
Thank you.
I just have a, I guess a follow-up question on that, and then a few questions on the process. You know, at this time, this proposal doesn't include changing the lot sizes or minimum lot sizes per unit for the very low-density and low-density. Is that proposed as part of the housing use request?
I don't know that offhand. Maybe Andrew does. Andrew, do you know, I, I would assume that it's sort of making a recommendation across the.
I think that, you know, Corey, to, you know, I think it's in the presentation also, just that those, you know, the, the areas that we're proposing, you know, are the areas of most need, you know, where there is the greatest difference between, you know, between the minimum lots, between the lot sizes that we have in the city and the, you know, and the zoning classifications, you know, that, that moderate, high, and very high-density are where we see, you know, kind of, you know, so the greatest difference. So I, I think the intention is to make these changes now, and I don't think that we were looking to make, you know, to make change, additional changes to the low or very-low districts, or density-subject districts. I think that, you know, the Housing Needs Assessment also recommends, you know, and zoning administrator can, you know, can attest to this, you know, some larger reforms to our residential zoning districts. And so, you know, I think that really the intention would be, after getting this work done, to then be able to focus in, you know, the next year or so around, you know, looking at greater revamping of our residential zoning districts, instead of coming back for smaller changes to density, to those, to those, the low and very-less of categories.
Yeah, and I'll just concur that the, while these are some of the most pervasive and sort of low-hanging fruit, there are lots of other fundamental challenges with our residential zoning district that prevent the city, as it's always been built, to, you know, the neighborhoods that we know and love, find that certain types of buildings within those neighborhoods, certain scales, that, that fit within the context and that are buildings that you walk by every day in your neighborhood are non-conforming or illegal in the zoning code. And so we're looking back more comprehensively and, and entirely different system of residential zoning that's in place.
So I think my concern here is minimum lot sizes and minimum lot size per unit can be discriminatory everywhere, and they limit a lot of these. And I understand what Mr. Dash said about the number of parcels in these very high-density, high-density, moderate, you know, the number that don't currently need the minimum lot size per unit, but I think that's only one piece, because if we're not looking at the low-density, very-low density, that's probably the most underutilized land that could be, you know, more available if it wasn't subject to these really high requirements for minimum lot size and lot size per unit. Also, so I would love to see them stricken everywhere, or reduced everywhere. I think that only reducing them in these areas that are up for some of the issues we mentioned, permitting density, we're then kind of protecting the areas that allow, you know, that, that have already been protected. So, you know, in the presentation, it specifically says it kind of prevents density in these wealthy neighborhoods, and that's what we're kind of perpetuating here while we're doing. And it, it just seems a little bit piecemeal to me that there might be some disparity there while we're in the process of updating. And I, I understand that this is the low-hanging fruit, but I think that opens up a little bit. It just seems to protect those wealthy areas a lot more for a little longer, while, you know, opening up some of these other neighborhoods that maybe don't have those resources or the same resources to further development. So I just have some concern there. I think overall, if the goal is laudable, and I, I think allowing density everywhere is where we want it to end up. I just have concern about implementing it in phases.
Understood, and we'll look at it a little bit more, so that we can come follow up with you on that, just to see if that, if that bears out, if that, you know, because there really aren't, I don't believe, and again, I'm not saying this offhand, just as a zoning administrator, I don't believe that there are a lot of multi-unit, very-low and low-density districts. But again, we can, and it also will look at that, see, is there that same level of disparity between the minimum lot size and the actual lots that exist in those districts?
I guess, and that is a good point, because we need to look at this more holistically, those areas that do have those, require those larger lot sizes to be R1. So that's something to look at in conjunction with this later, but, yeah, I, I welcome that additional information. And then I just had, I think, a point of clarity or question on the process. So on the process slide, you already mentioned that not only these ones that we're addressing today, but the other ones, the other issues that we'll be addressing in two weeks, we'll have a comprehensive briefing, and then we'll have our hearing. I think what's not reflected on the kind of upcoming process is that this will also go to City Council. I, I think most of us know that, but just for any, like, there will be an extended process, it doesn't end at Planning Commission. So PGA, H goes past for 29. You know, this is a continuing process, and as Commissioner Mazat mentioned, this is a lot to digest for me involved. So I'm really looking forward to anybody who contributes to that EngagePGH page. Really welcome, you know, community insights, and really interested in seeing, you know, everybody's comments. So that was just a clarification for the record, I don't think I have any additional comments at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neil. Any other comments from Commission? Again, I'll just reiterate, you know, good job in delivering today's presentation. Look forward to additional. This is gonna end today's briefing portion of the agenda. And let me do a time check. It is 2:25. Do we agree that coming back for hearing in action at 2:35 is fair and reasonable?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Well then, I'll see everybody at 2:35. Thank you so much, we're going to close out the briefing.
Has stopped.
Before it ends. So, appreciate the comments. appreciate the comments.
You likely cannot hear me.
Just to confirm, we could hear you earlier. We are muted, so we couldn't respond.
Oh, excellent. Very good. We're about 11 seconds from being back on. I'm gonna go ahead and call people back to session. Commissioners, if you can turn on your cameras just to acknowledge that you are here. Most of us are are on well, it's supposed to a 50/50 split of those of us online and in the room. How about the court reporter? Have we let the court reporter in? Is the court reporter here?
Yeah, we we have someone by the name of Lizzie, but we're not sure if she's the court reporter.
Hi, yes, I am the court reporter.
Fantastic. Welcome, Lizzie. We appreciate you being here.
No problem.
Okay, well, we're gonna go ahead and jump in if you're ready. Okay, very good. All right. So this is the hearing and action portion of the Planning Commission meeting for September 17, 2023. Welcoming everyone, this is the portion of the meeting where cases are presented for action by the Planning Commission. During the hearing portion of the Planning Commission meeting, we will take public testimony. And for those that are not in the room, and I cannot see the full room, those that are online, just do a raise your hand. Those that are in the room, someone will direct you to where you'll sit for your public testimony. I'm going to go ahead and do roll call. Commissioner Blackwell.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Burton Falk, present. Commissioner Dick.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Mazza. Thank you. Commissioner O'Neill. Thank you. I know that Commissioner Gammie is not here. Commissioner Cantonia, Commissioner Ruiz, and Commissioner Wu are not present today. All right. So moving into today's agenda. The agenda for September 17, 2024 is as follows. Agenda item A, approval of minutes. Agenda item B, correspondence. Agenda item C, plan of lots. Agenda items D are hearing and action. And under hearing and action today, we have three items. Then agenda item E is the director's report. I'm going to move back up to agenda item A, which is approval of minutes. Commissioners, we have no minutes before us for approval today. Agenda item B, which is correspondence, I will read through the correspondence. Correspondence for September 17, 2024 regarding fair housing amendments. We are in receipt of correspondence from Joanne Tippett. In receipt of correspondence from Sam Kragler. In receipt of correspondence from Michael Schmidt. And we are in receipt of something from Jeremy Pazaz. Regarding item DR-2024-05047 at 933 Penn Avenue, we are in receipt of correspondence from the following. Candace Comar, Ivor Hill, Joanne Lyon, and Ted Lyon. at 1096 Goodman Street, we are in receipt of correspondence from Barb Warwick, Pittsburgh District 5 City Council member. Regarding nominate for Community Data Justice Collaborative, the City of Pittsburgh and Black Equity Coalition, BEC, we are in correspondence from Prince Matthews, Senior MPA Communications Manager, Black Equity Coalition, and the Poise Foundation. That concludes our correspondence for September 17, 2024. Under agenda item C, we have plan of lots. Under plan of lots, we have one item. That item is as follows. Heinz History Center Strip District Major Consolidation. Presenting that here this afternoon is Mr. Shepke. Mr. Shepke, I'm not sure if it's just me. I'm having challenges hearing you.
Okay, my microphone is unmuted.
Much better.
Okay, thank you. This is the Heinz History Center consolidation. This is the consolidation of 11 parcels into one parcel. The proposed lot, one R, would have frontage on Penn Avenue, 13th Street, Smallman Street, and 12th Street. It would be 79,622 square feet in area. The Heinz History Center is located on the subject property, and this is a major consolidation that was first reviewed by the Planning Commission on September 3, 2024. Staff's recommended motion is to approve the Heinz History Center consolidation. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Shepke. We will open the floor for public testimony regarding the plan of lots item as just discussed. Are there any hands raised either in Commissioner Dick?
Well, if there are no, if there's no public, I would recommend that that we approve this motion.
Okay. Are there any hands raised either online or in the room?
Um, no hands raised.
Very good. It it appears that Commissioner Dick has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Mazza made a second. I'll do roll call. Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Mazza?
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner O'Neill? My apologies, I'm seeing Commissioner Gammie. And so Commissioner Gammie.
I just hopped on, so I'll abstain because I I'm not sure where we are right now.
Understood. Just to catch you up, we're at plan of lots, but I'll take the abstention. All right, so having cleared the plan of lots, we're moving on to agenda item D. That is hearing and action. I'm going to read them in. And they are as follows. Item number one under hearing and action is DCP-ZDR-2024-00001 at 135 51st Street. Agenda item two under hearing and action. at 1096 Goodman Street. Item number three under hearing and action. SP10. This is the Hazelwood Green. Having said that, we are looking at the items under hearing and action. We will hear the presentations, then invite public testimony, and then commission will vote. Going back to agenda item one under hearing and action, DCP-ZDR-2024-00001 135 51st Street. This is new construction of 15 townhomes in the central Lawrenceville neighborhood. Presenting today is Mr. Fraker.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Well, our applicants can come up to the table and we can promote applicants. All right, good afternoon, commissioners. I will do a brief introduction and then I'll turn it over to the applicants. This is project development plan application DCP-CDR 2024-0001 filed by Rothschild Rhino Collaborative for new construction of multifamily development of 15 townhomes in the central Lawrenceville neighborhood. For section 905.04.c3.b, the planning commission shall review projects that exceed 15,000 square feet in gross floor area. The site is currently a warehouse which will be demolished. The project proposes 15 new condominium style townhomes that will be accessed by a single curb path and shared driveway off 51st First Street. Each townhome will have a rear facing garage access from a shared driveway with one integral vehicle parking space and a room for internal light. The project includes 10 foot wide sidewalks along 50th Street and 51st Street and 12 street trees in compliance with the RIB standards. A development activities meeting was not required as there is no registered community organization in the neighborhood. That did meet with the Lawrenceville United Group on November 30, 2023. The proposal went through staff designer, design review. Staff reviewed the project favorably and reviewed by the contextual design advisory panel is not recommended. A copy of the urban design targets are attached to your report. There were no requests to the zoning board of adjustment for this case. The recommended motion is that the planning commission approves project development plan DCP-CDR 2024-0001 with the following conditions. The Department of Mobility and Infrastructure shall review and approve all zoning permits and the construction management plan prior to issuing the record of zoning approval. And that final construction plans including site plans and elevations be reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator prior to issuance of zoning approval. With that, I'll turn it over to the applicants for the presentation.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you again for the opportunity to present what we think will be a very exciting project for the Lawrenceville neighborhood. My name is Jeff Campbell. I'm with Principal Rothschild Rhino Collaborative, a texturing urban design firm in the Strip District. I'm joined with Rory Sobel on behalf of the owner and developer in this case, and that's Lobos Management. And then also online, we have Dan Graper on behalf of Farnier McCarty Gray with Civil Engineering. So this project, as Mr. Fraker had mentioned, we've got a aerial here in in the center. We're replacing warehouse on the site. It's a rusty warehouse that's been aging, and we're excited to present 15 new townhomes in this case. These townhomes are meant to be market rate. However, Lobos has a history of doing workforce development, so or workforce working with the workforce demographic. So this is intended on being a slightly, you know, more modest version than some of the things we've seen in Lawrenceville more recently. And then as Mr. Fraker mentioned, the reason we're here is everything we are doing by right, we're not requesting any variances, any exceptions. But it is as part of the RIB based on the size and scale we are required to present, we're required to get approval for the planning mission. On the picture, you have the general site location. So we are between 51st and 50th Streets. So we face the right of way on both 50th and 51st, and then there is private property on either side of the other two. So currently, Cabasium Landscaping owns occupies a pretty large portion of the of the site to the northwest. And to the southwest, we have the Spirit Restaurant, which is a venue. And then there's also the Happy Pedestrian Way that just kind of connects there that final block. And then here, rotating on the left hand, this is a side overlooking 51st Streets, similar to that last view angle that we just had. This is the current warehouse that's there, and then And then from the rear on the right-hand side, so you can see it does take up most of the lot. The lot is currently all impervious. Uh, you know, pretty much zero lot lines on the on Fifty-first Streets and actually on all of them except for the uh, the north side, where we have a small driveway that accesses into the rear. Next slide please. One of the things I should note is that currently it's uh, if we go back to apologies, um, if the use currently is uh, dumpster storage, if you will, so it's not dumpsters, it's storage of dumpsters. This is a dumpster supply company is using these to cycle in and out when they have empty dumpsters. Go back. And then, you know, as I presented at the briefing, we like to do a site forces diagram before we do anything, kind of understand the, you know, what's driving site design. Um, the peach area on the top of the page is current existing residential. We feel this is an extension of that. It's a book, it's currently a commercial area, but we feel like, you know, this is an extension of that residential area. Uh, Fiftieth, although the graphic doesn't show it great, uh, Fifty Street actually dead ends at the end of the site. Uh, so it actually turns there along Harrison Street. Fifty-first Street continues all the way down to the river. That's what that image is in the circle on the lower right. Uh, one of the things that R I B likes to encourage is connections to the river. So our pedestrian connections are something we were focused in on a lot as we were laying out the site here. Next slide please. And then here we're rotated, we rotate all over on this presentation, so apologies. Uh, so Fifty-first Street is on the top of the page. Fiftieth in the neighborhood is on the bottom of the page. Uh, the peach again is the existing building. You can see it takes up probably eighty percent of the site. The rest of it is all paved at this point. So again, completely impervious site. You also notice three red lines, two along Fifty-first Street and one along Fiftieth. Those are the current curb cuts to the site. So there's three of them in total. And then a little harder to pick up, but there's a grade difference here. That is from the upper right-hand corner to the lower left-hand corner. There's a cross level of about five feet. So it's a generally flat site, but there is definitely some some grade to uh, to to handle as we're going through here. And then we have some site photos. Happy to come back to this should we need to. Side please. This is the proposed uh, site plan that we're uh, site that we're proposing. Um, it's fifteen townhomes. Those townhomes are all rear-entry. Uh, there's a one-car garage uh, in the back of each one. Uh, we did that in part to, you know, comply with sort of the intent of the R I B being very pedestrian-focused. We have a single curb cut. Uh, our original plan actually had that curb cut coming off of Fiftieth Street. Uh, after meeting with the community, we heard a lot of uh, strong feelings that we should actually turn that over to Fifty-first Street and kind of put traffic down inside the the uh, that neighborhood. Uh, so that is one change that we've done since that development activities meeting. Uh, and in general, I'd say we got some good support from from the community on the project. The uh, visitability is one thing that we talked about at the briefing. Um, here you'll see that there are fifteen units total. All those units are independent units, are independent townhomes. The one in the upper right-hand corner is fully visitable in that you can get into the first floor. Everything is flush from the garage through all the way through the building into the sidewalk in the front. Because of the grade and the drive and trying to mitigate all these, we have a slow, you know, as you get away from those units, there's a small incremental differences throughout all those buildings. Um, and then each one does have a six-inch step from the garage in the rear into the unit itself. So while not fully visitable, we do feel like that is something, you know, adaptations can be made to provide a ramp to get somebody from the garage into the unit. The, I mentioned the single curb cut in the upper left. Uh, there are rear decks, uh, not shown here, but there is a rear deck behind each unit to give them a little bit of exterior space. The sidewalk itself, you can uh, see that graphic where we do have a full ten-foot sidewalk outside the property line on both sides of the street. And then in addition to that, we've sort of uh, used stoops and steps to give a little bit of buffer space from the sidewalk itself. Of course, you can see the street trees that Mr. Fraker mentioned. And then the final thing to mention on this slide is uh, we are not enclosing the sides of the building. So we have between three and five feet on the rights and the lefts of the building so that one could get from the front to the back. Next slide please. And moving to the elevations, this, you know, Lawrenceville, as we all know, has a very varied uh, architecture. Um, everything from very traditional to super contemporary. Uh, we're definitely a more contemporary work, but we're trying to, again, in a more modest design, trying to respect some of those earlier patterns that were there as well. So you'll see things like the larger windows from the contemporary, but some of those rhythms in the overall width. Some of the more traditional architecture. Next slide please. And so this is a perspective that we're uh, from Fifty-first Streets. This is the that primary facade and the first shot that we that we shared. Um, again, this unit on the left is the most visible unit. So here you can see, you know, a flush entrance and it slowly starts to step with one to, you know, three or four steps as you go across Fifty-first Street. Uh, you'll see, you know, we do have a lot of windows. We wanted, you know, the success frankly of townhomes is natural light really helps drive that. So we wanted to really pick up on large windows and uh, get lots of natural light in the units. Uh, trying to give some more contemporary materials, but still, you know, giving each unit its own identity, but still having them hang together as an overall, as an overall design. I also get a sense of that landscape and that sidewalk where you do have stoops in every unit except the visitable one. Uh, and then the street trees as well. On the floor level occupancy during the briefing. Uh, so the first floor in all of these would be a garage in the rear, but in the front would be a flexed space. The floor above that is the uh, living level, so kitchen, living room, that thing. And then the upper level would be the bedrooms. Uh, these are all two-bedroom units. Uh, lastly on this elevation, uh, one of the comments or either elevation was the punch at the entrance. Um, it was a little more uh, it's a quest to give a little more articulation to the to the actual entrance. We've been working on that. We're not quite there yet, but we've given it a little more punch, using some door color and things like that. I think that's an area we'll continue to to focus on and refine as we go forward. Uh, and then this, I'm sorry to go back just one more time. This is from the opposite corner. So here you can see where that grade difference really has kind of uh, come across the whole site. And uh, you do get a number of steps here at the lowest point. Side please. And then the materials, uh, again, metallic pallets that are found throughout the neighborhood, brick, uh, concrete block, a hardy siding or something of the like, and then a little more modern window frames, the black type windows. Next slide please. I'm almost done. Uh, these are the elevations, happy to go back to them. We need to, one of the comments that did come up uh, in the briefing was also looking at that side elevation, uh, specifically the one in the lower right-hand corner, which would be the most visible from Fifty-first Street. We have worked on that a little bit. Uh, we are also proposing some lighting components to help make that space feel a little healthier. And uh, next slide. This is just elevations of the Fiftieth Street on the other side. Again, the last slide here, but just the uh, we go up and for comments and discussions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, given that concludes the presentation, at this time, we open the floor for public testimony. Is there anyone there in the room or online that would like to speak regarding this?
You have one. We have uh, Dave Br- Br- Brangin. Um, you're unmuted, um, please state your name and the record and you're free to talk for three minutes.
Yeah, hi, this is uh, Dave Brangin, Executive Director at Lawrenceville United, or the community organization here in Lawrenceville that represents residents. Um, just overall, wanted to share, you know, this project did come through our and Lawrenceville Corporation's um, community process. Uh, overall was received very positively by folks who attended our community meeting. Um, you know, we think it's good to have housing at this location. Um, really appreciate consideration that was um, given to cite the ingress and egress for the parking along Fifty-first Street. As as Jeff pointed it out, that did come up in our community meetings and, you know, the plans were modified to reflect that. So very appreciative of that. Um, so overall, you know, supportive of this project. Um, the couple of things that we did request of uh, of the developer for this project were just uh, to continue to communicate with us through construction staging, um, to mitigate, you know, noise and disruptions to adjacent residents. Um, sharing the landscaping plan when that's finalized. We know they're not quite there yet. Um, and then, and you know, I think uh, they've been very uh, willing to do both of those things. Um, we we've also asked that, you know, and this has been something that we've tried to ask of any housing developer that comes into Lawrenceville and goes through our community process, is that uh, they don't exclude housing choice vouchers for any rental properties that are eligible for the voucher payment standards, not necessarily requiring that they only, you know, rent to housing choice voucher households, but that they would just not exclude them as part of any tenant screening process. Um, our understanding is that they're not willing to 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 commit to that at this point. But, you know, that that continues just to be an important piece for for us, uh, as we're explaining, expanding the supply of housing in Lawrenceville. We want to make sure that it is uh, reaching households that have disproportionately borne displacement in Lawrenceville. Um, it it, you know, not asking the developers to, you know, change their their existing rents or or what they what they will be once this gets um, produced. We just really, if if, you know, if the market rents are below the payment standards, we'd really just like for voucher vouchers not to be excluded. So, um, just wanted to get that on the record, uh, but I'll uh, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brangin, for coming in and your testimony today. Are there additional hands raised?
No more hands raised.
Thank you so much. Okay, uh, Commissioners, that concludes public testimony. Are there any questions, comments from the commission, or is there a motion from the floor? With conditions as stated in our reports. Commissioner Dick?
Okay, um, with the proviso that I'm still disappointed in the lack of overall uh, accessibility in this project when I realize that the fact that they um, the terrain is working against that and so on, I move that we approve the project.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Dick. That was a motion. Do I have a second from the floor? Second, Commissioner O'Neill. Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill, for a second. I will do roll call. Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Burton Falk? Aye. Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Gammy?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Mazza?
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner O'Neill? All right, motion carries, it passes, and uh, thank you and a good rest of your day to you.
Thank you.
Moving on. Moving on to the next agenda item under Hearing and Action is item number two, which is as follows. D C P dash Z D R dash twenty twenty four dash zero three one two seven at ten ninety-six Goodman Street. This is a conditional use for environmental site remediation work to cap exposed slag material and restore exposed slag areas to vegetated meadow condition. This is in the Swiss Elm uh, Park and uh, Mr. Kinsella is going to present here this afternoon.
Thank you, Chairman. Chair. Uh, yes, this is a conditional use application. D C P C D R dash twenty twenty four dash zero three one two seven, which was filed by Civil and Environmental Consultants, Inc. On behalf of the Urban Redevelopment Authority. I'm sorry, I'm gonna pause myself real quick. I just want to do a sound check with the with the applicants to make sure that uh, they are on. Uh, so I think uh, it should be Lily Friedman and Dana Clan.
They should be on.
They should be on, okay.
I'm Lily Friedman here.
I have Dana Clan here.
Thank you. Uh, okay, um, yeah, I'll continue on reading in the the application. Uh, so this site consists of two parcels, uh, with the application applicant's intention to submit a lot consolidation plan at a later date. Um, this is considered an excavation grating fill major use, which is a conditional use throughout the city. Uh, again, conditional uses require both Planning Commission as well as City Council approval in conditions with the, in accordance with the the standards of section nine twenty-two dot oh six. Uh, for the specifically the use standards for the excavation grating and fill major are as follows, that it meets the land operations ordinance and as well as the stormwater management uh, ordinance, uh, that the operation is controlled in such a manner as to offer reasonable protections against the neighborhood, against possible additional impacts. Uh, residential streets shall be used for robbing or vehicles unless there are no physical, other physical options, and that the the plan be prepared and submitted to the planning director addressing the number of vehicles that will be addressed, uh, as well as the vehicle, the routes of these vehicles to take. These have been submitted uh, to the the planning director. Um, the applicant proposes three entry and exit points uh, as a part of this trucking route to deliver an estimated fifty thousand cubic yards of dirt and topsoil. Needs as a part of of this remediation process that was approved by the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. So those three access points are the Nine Mile Trail, uh, that is accessed via Commercial Street, as well as Goodman Street and Love Street. Uh, the applicant is uh, continues to be in discussion with the City of Pittsburgh regarding permission to use this as part of the Nine Mile Run Trail owned both by the City of Pittsburgh as well as the U R A. Uh, so there's um, there's been a, there would require a temporary access easement during this portion period of remediation work. Uh, there was a letter of support submitted by the Director of Public Works, uh, and that was included as a part of this hearing report. Uh, there is no registered community organization in the neighborhood, so uh, development activities meeting was not required. However, the applicant has uh, in the time between briefing and hearing, uh, had a meeting with the Swiss Elm Park neighborhood. That was on July twenty ninth, twenty twenty four. The site is located within the Frick Park Historic District. Uh, there is material submitted to the Department of City Planning, and historic review was uh, deemed to not be required. Uh, there is a stormwater management plan, uh, that was submitted as well. Uh, the reviewer determined that the stormwater permit was not used, given the scope of work for this application. Um, and the applicant continues to work with the Forestry Department on the uh, tree removal process as well as the alternative tree plan to account for any trees that are being removed on site. Um, and so that was uh, I'll get to the conditions later, but um, like, and then there's been approval by the Department of Building Infrastructure on this, for access on this site. Um, so staff uh, recommends a positive recommendation, recommendation to City Council on this application with the condition that the applicant continue to work with the Forestry Department to finalize uh, the, to finalize the tree replacement plan as a part of this site remediation. And with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant team to present to the Commissioners.
Thank you so much, Paul. Um, and thank you for having us today. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Lily Friedman. I'm the Manager of Development Projects at the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh. Um, I'm joined today by Weiss Behan from the U R A's Quality Controlled Inspection Team, as well as Dana Clan from Civil and Environmental Consultants, Inc. Um, as described, today we are joining you for hearing an action related to our conditional use case for environmental site remediation work to cap exposed exposed slag material and restore exposed slag areas to a vegetated meadow state. Um, a little bit of site history for folks on the call today. Um, so the site was formerly owned by Duquesne Slag Products Company until nineteen seventy-two. Um, when the U R A came into ownership for the site, we had plans to redevelopment, redevelop it as a third phase of Somerset at Frick. Um, at that time, we entered into a consent order and agreement with P A D E P um, in the year two thousand. Um, and the land must be entered into the D E P's Land Recycling and Environmental Standard Act. So this site is an Act Two site. Next slide please. Uh, the chemicals of concern, as indicated by a Phase Two Environmental Site Assessment, detected arsenic, iron, manganese, thallium, and vanadium. Next slide please. Um, and since the, you know, uh, plans for Somerset Phase Three, um, the U R A has changed directions. Um, in the year of twenty twenty-one, we began pursuing a different idea um, due to challenges for some due to challenges for Somerset Phase Three related to the costs of infrastructure and utilities. Since then, we have developed a new concept, which includes a bright field or a brown field that is developed into a solar array. And so there are three phases to this approach. The first, which we are here to discuss today, is the lot consolidation and remediation of the approximately 70 acre site. That is what's on the table today for consideration, and in the future, we will return back to the city to consider a solar development on roughly 15 acres of the approximately 70 acre site. Lastly, years from now, we anticipate a subdivision and disposition of roughly 55 acres to the city of Pittsburgh for a Frick Park extension. Next slide. So yeah, I talked a little bit about the first phase, which we're here to discuss today, which is the lot consolidation and remediation. So on the left pictured image here, you will see the two lots, 129 F1 and 129 J150, which will be consolidated into one lot for this remediation to occur. And on the picture on the right, you can see a zoom in to these two parcels on the left. And you see the light yellow tan color, which shows you the approximate limits of slag. The remediation strategy on this site, so what are we really doing at on this site, is a cap and cover approach to the remediation of approximately the approximately 70 acre site. This is based on a plan that was approved by the PADEP in June of 2023. And the remediation plan includes the following strategy, a capping of the site with a 12 inch combination of clean soil and vegetated topsoil. A total volume of approximately 50,000 cubic yards being moved onto the site. Erosion and sedimentation control measures prior to solar, I'm sorry, soil placement to to ensure erosion does not occur on the site, as well as safety and silt fencing. And as described, the post remediation state will be a vegetative meadow. Next slide, please. So we've talked a little bit about access routes in the past. I want to review these with you today. So the three access routes that were included in the ZDR submission were access Route A, which is Goodman Street, access Route B, which is Love Street, and access Route C, which starts in the blue arrow where the nine mile run trail parking lot is and and moves towards the blue arrow towards the middle of the pictured image, which would lead up to the site. We have received a letter of support for the nine mile run trail access route, which is a combination of city and URA-owned property by the Department of Public Works. We also are coordinating with City Legal for a temporary construction easement due to the joint ownership of access Route C. Slide, please. Community engagement. So the URA has done community continuous community engagement since the inception of this change of scope from the Somerset Phase Three plans. So since 2021, we have formed one Swiss Elm Park Solar Steering Committee. So this was before there was a community group active in the neighborhood. We developed our own to help inform the projects from the very beginning. We've hosted since then four public meetings, three focus group meetings, specifically to consider these out access routes and also future trail possibilities. We've done one access road survey to understand what how the community felt about the access roads. You'll note in the fine print on the slide that we almost had a 50/50 reaction with a slight favor of Goodman Street over the nine mile run trail, but it was not a clear, you know, significant percentage either way. We had three opportunities to share anonymous feedback online, as well as many opportunities at each community meeting to share note cards in a box for anonymous feedback. And lastly, as Paul described, we've held one community meeting. Since our briefing and before this hearing in action, where we talked about the invitation to bid, which we expect to go out by the end of the month here today to inform the community again of of what was coming, and we anticipate that community engagement will only continue as this project progresses. Our next anticipated event will include the selected contractors, so we can talk about the actual construction project and and their plans for the site with the specificity that they'll provide in their in their in their bids for the site. Slide, please. Yeah, as Paul discussed, we are still working on our tree replacement plan, so that's one of the final items which we are looking forward to completing with support and coordination with city forestry. We did, since our last meeting, complete a vegetation analysis or tree inventory. That is currently under review from city forestry. We've reviewed some, received some comments, which we are in active conversation about. And that tree inventory will inform the tree replacement strategy. So we're looking forward to completing that and working with city forestry to develop an approved plan. At this time, we can take any questions. I've got my engineering team here as well, who can answer any technical technical questions, but again, thank you so much for the time and opportunity to present.
Thank you very much for the presentation and being so thorough. At this time, we open the floor for public testimony. Is there anyone in the room or anyone online here on behalf of this?
No one online, and no one in person either.
Okay, great. Yeah, it's looking pretty sparse in there from what I can see now. All right, commissioners, are there any comments or questions, or do we have a potential motion from the floor with conditions as stated in the report? Commissioner Dick?
Just one question. What precautions have you taken to control leachate from the the under under part of the slide, slide heat?
So up to date, you know, we haven't started the construction of the site, so we aren't currently actively controlling the site as is, but there will be, you know, a number of of measures to, you know, protect the site from erosion in the future. I'll let our engineering team describe that in more detail.
Yeah, hey, this is Dana Clan with Civil and Environmental Consultants. I don't know if everyone can hear me.
Yes.
So just to to tag on to what Lily just explained, CEC's Environmental Group prepared a, it's called a remedial investigation report and cleanup plan that was submitted to the DEP and their environmental brownfield folks back in, it started in 2022, and then that was approved by the DEP back in 2023. So I think that addressed the issues that we were just asked about with regard to groundwater, and that basically set forth the different options for capping and remediating the site. And that's kind of where we stand today, is we're looking to bring in this clean material and and cap the site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Steve Mazza, planning commissioner. So how long do you think it'll take for that remediation to be to protect anything that's on top of the ground if there's any human contact with all those chemicals? Would it be a period of time where that they would, you won't be allowed to use that property? Do you understand my question? Maybe I'm saying it right.
Yeah, I think so. So yeah, to be clear, this is not public property to date, so our site is completely URA-owned, and any public use of the site would be considered trespassing. It's a it's a private, you know, it's not a it's not a publicly accessible site. That will remain the case throughout the construction period, which we anticipate to be about a year long. After the construction completes, the URA will then be working to develop. It is anticipated, you know, we'll need to come back to the city for all of the approvals for the future phases. But it's anticipated that the solar development will take place, and until that is actually completed and the site is subdivided whereby a portion of the site will be dedicated to the city of Pittsburgh, there will be no public access allowed on the site.
That's so. Okay, my question will be then, when you're gonna do the solar development, and you're gonna have construction workers on that site to develop it? Or that would be safe with that capping process before, so nobody would be affected by those chemicals?
Gotcha. So once the capping is completed, the site will be safe to traverse by the construction workers for the solar development.
There's Lily, I could add on to that. There's also a health and safety plan that's been developed as part of our NPDS permit submission to the DEP. That health and safety plan would be followed by the contractor during the capping activity and all of that construction. Also, for any future development, whether it's the solar farm or or anything else in the future, there would need to be a similar health and safety plan developed and blessed by the DEP prior to construction.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, commissioners, any additional questions, comments, or do we have a motion from the floor with conditions as stated in our reports?
So moved, Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill for a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Cantonia. I will do a roll call. Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Gammy?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Mazza? Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill?
Aye.
And Commissioner Cantonia?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. So thank you very much, and have a great remainder of your day.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Moving on to our final agenda item for today, which which is as follows, DCP-MPZC-2024-00399, SP 10 Hazelwood Green. This is signage amendments to the Hazelwood Green PLDP in the Hazelwood neighborhood. Presenting that here for off today is Mr. Kinsella.
And before you start, I do have to recuse on this matter, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair O'Neill, who will be recusing. Go ahead and proceed to introduce it in after Vice Chair O'Neill has exited.
Thank you. Yes, so, ladies and gentlemen, this is DCP-MPZC-2024-00399, which was filed by Tishman Spire on behalf of Almona LP, the property owner, for amendments to the preliminary land development plan. As you may recall, the applicant had presented three sets of amendments at the July 9th, 2024 briefing. Those included amendments to create a type E development category, and those associated standards with spectator and recreation type uses. There was a set of miscellaneous amendments that were applicable to the entire SP district, and then a third set of amendments related to, as a supplement to the existing signage regulations, which really were not really completed. So that's why the applicant proposed a series of signage regulations to the PLDP. And it was agreed between DCP staff and the applicant to hear those first two sets of amendments at the July 23 hearing. And then the applicant would come back later for this signage regulations, which we've met with the applicant between the July 9 briefing and, you know, several times regarding these signage amendments to address some of the concerns that we had with the initial signage proposals. So those concerns related to requirements around the portal branding signs with fear of any conflict with a neighborhood gateway sign with the the Hazelwood neighborhood, those have been addressed, and I'll let the applicant explain those changes. But also, another point of concern had to do with sponsorship signage, and with the thought of having it limited to the existing code. Additional regulations regarding the scoreboard, video board signage to include additional requirements around screening to protect any spillover effect into residential areas outside of the SP district. And then lastly, just kind of some administrative issues that have been cleared up between the applicant and DCP staff. So DCP staff feels that these changes that the applicant have made are sufficient to alleviate those concerns that were just stated with the following and with the following reasons. So the applicant, again, provided additional information and made some changes to the portal branding signage requirements that kind of alleviated that concern of a conflict between that and any gateway signs. With the sponsorship signage, the applicant amended the regulations to more closely align with with other similar signage types that are applied to in other parts of the city. And also has a more scaled down version that is applicable to the urban open space parcels in this district. Other changes include additional requirements around screening to prevent that light pollution in surrounding residential areas, including documentation of how those screening requirements prevent any type of light pollution. And then lastly, again, just alleviating those concerns about the whole approval process with these different proposed signage types. There was a development activities meeting held back in June 11 of 2024, and there's a summary report of that meeting attached. There is a Hazelwood neighborhood plan that a compliance letter was also included as a part of this. And so with the the changes that we feel the applicant has made, we, DCP staff recommends approval of the changes to the the signage amendments as the applicant has presented. So with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant team to get that presentation.
So good afternoon again, Madam Chair and the rest of the members of the commission. John Kamen here for the applicant Tishman Spire, and with me is signage wizard Bill Colano. I did want to start out by thanking everybody from staff for working with us. As you may remember from our July hearing, signage was a portion of the PLDP that was not really put in when the PLDP was first adopted. So we're thrilled that there's development happening on site, and thought it was time to update the signage provisions of the PLDP so we could not only have consistency throughout the entire sub-district, but that we would also be able to have opportunities and signage opportunities that our tenants who are now coming are requesting. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Colano to walk through, you know, some of the changes that we've made. And again, I just want to thank staff for all their time and hard work.
Thank you, John. This is the specific part of the PLDP that sends us to this body. And underscored, Hazelwood Green is anticipating the development of a customized signage and weight band plan that will be integrated into the guidelines, and thus we are here. We can go to the next slide. We started this project, we are an SP 10 district, by researching into the other SP SP districts, and we put together the most liberal aspects of all of those codes. And we, uh, put together the most liberal aspects of all of those, uh, codes. And at one point, uh, from Tishman Spire, Austin Gellhart said, this is not Hazelwood, this is not what we want. And, uh, we then flipped into a very, very conservative approach to signage to make it much more neighborhood like. And we presented this to the Hazelwood, uh, community groups and it's the first time I received applause for a sign plan and, uh, which, which said something. And the sign types that we have proposed are nine of them and we'll review them very quickly. Portal branding, these are at the two major entrances to the site. They are only permitted in the river district portion of the development. Next, we have district branding signs and these are the signs that are within the district to help identify the different segments of it. And you all recognize like cultural district banners that are on the, uh, streets to help make, create a sense of place. That's what we're trying to do with this sign type. Commercial signs, these are really the same, uh, code guidelines as the city plan. Uh, you get two, uh, square feet of signage for every linear foot of frontage. Uh, there's one difference, uh, city code, uh, is divided at the 40-foot line into everything above being high wall, everything below being low wall. And we're going to show you that we've lifted this by five feet to a 45-foot rather than 40-foot height. And as many of you aware, uh, new buildings are being built with, uh, higher ground floors. Uh, it's just an adjustment to what, um, current architecture is, or responded current architectural trends. Um, we have in our next slide, high wall signs, uh, these again follow the city guideline of 2% of the face area of the building. And we're moving this, of course, to our 45-foot above line. Uh, and we are limiting them then, limiting them to two per building rather than the city's allowance of four. We have our parks signage, we are using the city open space, uh, plan for this. Uh, very straightforward, electronic signs, uh, these are only in the type D, uh, around the uh, public field area of the site. The city code is 1,200 square feet, we've reduced it to 1,000 square feet. Don't think we need the extra square footage. Third page of these are sponsorship signs. And these are primarily in that tight seat zone. And you'll notice there is a name like AT&amp;T Discovery District. This is like a working example to show you, um, how somebody has come in to sponsor and help pay for an underwrite and open space. We have event signage and you'll notice in the small type, this is at Hazelwood Greens. It's a, uh, city theater drive-in arts festival. We anticipate many more groups coming in and collectively we're giving 378 square feet of signage that's under 40 feet. Street signs follow the doming standard. Additional requirements, uh, signs with illumination, dinner at night, no flashing lights, no advertising signs, no illuminated signs within 100 feet of the river. And for the two major university buildings that are there, they are granted an additional, uh, sign allowance. Let's go on. So what I just showed you was what we had briefed you with on July 9th. And the next, uh, group of images are things that, uh, we were asked to include and provide a little visual backup for by our zoning, uh, department partners. And this is just of interest, showing you what the SP districts are and we're now SP 10. Station Square was SP 4, Baker Square is SP 9 and on and on. So, uh, this is what we had researched before we started this project. Next. Uh, this is a, uh, sign comparison and Hazelwood Green was originally given a kind of inland reference to the zoning code. And what we want to, we were asked for is a, uh, an allowance for ground signage of 150 square feet. And you'll notice that the comparable districts, the three other riverfront district sections of the sign code, um, that allow it, um, include, uh, the first next to the blue sign is the strip, Shady Side, um, Southside Flats, uh, the middle one is Strip District, uh, Lawrenceville. Uh, the one on the right is downtown in North Shore. So we're asking for this sign allowance to match what the owner of the front districts have. Next. This has to do with our sign height, the, uh, city dividing line is 40 feet. On the right is, uh, Southside Works, that is 50 feet. We follow in the middle because of anticipated architectural types of 45 feet from the ground for that dividing line. And, uh, uh, our size comparison, uh, Southside Works gets a larger allowance and we are sticking with the, uh, city guideline of 80 square feet for wall signs. Uh, next. We have, um, and this is completely impacted by the slide before, we've raised the dividing line to 45 feet. 2% is the city allowance, um, Southside Works has 2%. Uh, we're just changing that type requirement. Next. Uh, this we were asked, we'll take a little bit of the explanation and this has to do with light spillage. And the light blue section along the river that is labeled with SP 10 is the Hazelwood District. And this is an elevation map and it is showing that our site is basically flat. And so we anticipate signage facing the river, signage facing the city. Do we anticipate signage facing the hill? We don't think so. And that's kind of why we, uh, eliminated, uh, two of the four high wall sign options. And so you can see on the right that it goes into green, then yellow, then red to the top of the hill. And we have almost a 400-foot, um, height difference, which will be dramatic. Everybody, uh, to the right side will be looking over what is happening largely in the Hazelwood Green, uh, site. Next. Uh, very subtle change and I've been trying to push for this for many years and the way the, uh, this has to do with projecting signage and right now you're required to put a box around the sign. And so if you wanted an oval sign, you would have to put a box around the oval and you would end up with a sign of maybe six or seven square feet, the same with the circle. And so we are asking that these other primary shapes, uh, can be a nine-square-foot oval and a nine-square-foot circle without drawing the box around them. And next. This is, um, new and, uh, there really are not signs addressing, uh, open spaces. And so what we're proposed here and, uh, agreed upon is a tiered system. And so the smallest signs that are allowed in open spaces of two square feet are signs that might be on benches, planters, bike racks, water fountains, sculptures, uh, to help identify them. And that is the kind of blue box, uh, that's in the center of the page. Next, we have signage for medium, oops, let's go back again. Uh, of 10 square feet and this would be for playgrounds, small gardens, picnic areas, uh, trails, seating areas. And then we have a third group in this sign allowance for large slide signs, larger signs. And this would be for the naming of the plaza or large landscaping features, uh, large public art installations, um, parks, gazebos, pavilions. And as an example of that, in our next slide, we have, um, examples of, again, what these signs might look like to, uh, discover the like the AT&amp;T Discovery District or Chase Promenade or Salesforce Park. And these are all, um, sponsored, uh, spaces. Heinz Gate C is an example of a sign not attached to a building in an open space. Uh, the one in the bottom is for BNY Mellon, uh, Green and, uh, other identification on the right. And going forward, uh, this is the summary of the review process for our nine different sign types. And so what might come back to you are the upper left signs, uh, portal branding. Very important, uh, in the public realm. High wall signs above 45 feet as they do now and electronic signage. The next group below that is signs that would be approved by the Department of City Planning. And those are district branding signs, those are kind of like those, uh, banners that you saw on the cultural district. We have, uh, business identification signs, commercial signs, uh, below 45 feet. Signs within the parks or any sponsorship signs. The upper right is our event signs and we saw the big banner for the drive-in movie. Uh, we would follow the existing review process per the equivalent sign type that is, uh, in the public realm. And in the private realm, uh, there's not permit required because it's within the, um, a company's own space, if you will. And then lastly, sign type nine for all the DOT signs and we're following the existing, uh, Pendog review process. And I think that's our presentation for today.
Thank you so much. A very thorough presentation, uh, as we've grown, uh, to get from you. So at this time, we open the floor for our public testimony. Are there, uh, any hands raised or anyone, uh, in the room wishing to speak?
No one online, no one in the room.
Fantastic. Thank you for that confirmation. Okay, commissioners, at this time, uh, questions, comments or a motion from the floor? Hello, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Maza. Do I have a second?
Second. Okay.
Appreciate it. Now I'm going to do a roll call. Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Burton Falk.
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Gammy.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Maza. Uh, Commissioner O'Neil has recused and Commissioner Cantonia.
Aye.
All right, fantastic. So the, uh, motion passes and, uh, thank you. We appreciate you. Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, very good. So moving on to the final, uh, item in our agenda today, which is agenda item E. And that is the director's report. Um, do we have a director's report today?
You do not.
Only can all.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Lehman. Um, I appreciate, uh, you all taking it easy on me today, given I'm a little under weather. Uh, thank you so much. So now at this time, we might call for a motion from the floor to adjourn. Thank you, uh, Commissioner Maza, Commissioner Cantonia, that was a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. Good stuff.
Have a great two weeks.
Take care, everyone.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Commissioner Dick. Speedy recovery.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, everyone. Lady, you thought the last was first recorded. That was, uh, yeah, yeah. I'm about to cut it off a little.
Undermatic means, yes. Place changed pretty much.
Sound a little bit of shit. Some people. You can wash her down.
We're not going to work this in quite a bit to get it to.
Yeah.